I'd like to say good morning to everyone. We will now officially call our meeting to order. We will have the invocation by Assistant Chief Darryl Atkins, by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Coleman Harris. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this blessing of this beautiful day, the blessing of life that you give us. Lord, we pray that you would bless our city, bless our citizens and our leaders, Lord. We ask for your guidance in all things we do. Thank you for your love, grace and mercy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. If you've had time to look at the minutes, I'd like to consider approving the minutes for our regular February 4th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, if you've had time to go over the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
No, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. At this time, item number five, we'll consider, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of retail liquor license package. Lieutenant Jeremy?
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
We're here for the Jasper Chevron Package Store. That's going to be located at 475 Highway 195. That's going to be at the split of 5 and 195. It's going to be the store directly in front of the bowling alley there. They have applied for a retail liquor license. During our investigation, we have discovered they've met all the requirements of state law and the city ordinances and the police department does not have any objections to this application.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone here for or against? Like to speak at this time? Not, I entertain a motion from the council?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. At this time, we're considering appointment to Jasper City School Board of Education. Now, we're here from Councilman Jan Brown.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to consider an appointment to the Jasper City Board of Education for District 2. That's true. Who's getting? Teresa Teresa Share, of course, is our nominee. And...
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion and second nomination should be closed.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay. Now, I will entertain a motion and a second that the name of the nominee be appointed to the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. Teresa Share will be nominated back to the school board. Thank you. Okay, at this time, item number seven, we'll receive report and consider recommendation of emergency vehicle lighting. It's Jessica Cook.
Council members, for item number seven, we received no responses for our emergency vehicle lighting bid and I would like to request permission to rebid this contract.
Okay. You've heard the request. Are there any questions for her? Heard? If not, I entertain a motion this time.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay, item number eight?
For item number eight, I request permission to send bids for the following contracts. For item A, medical services at the city jail and item B, on-call concrete services.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay, item nine?
All right, for item nine, I request permission to renew the contract for grease, oil and lubricant for a second year with W. H. Thomas Oil Company under the same terms and pricing.
Okay, you heard the request? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
My second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll consider adoption of budget amendment. It's Kathy Jamis.
Council members, budget amendment number 10 provided the funding for a BBT truck in the amount of $214,000 and it also provided the library funding of $13,000 for an HVAC system as well as shelving. That would be coming from your capital improvement fund. We also requested funding, additional funding for the warming center in the amount of $15,000 and an additional $140,000 for workman's compensation premiums and this is ready for your approval today.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. And second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes.
We may have to add to that funding, the weather that's coming in for the warming.
True.
Okay, item 11?
And council members, item 11 was to go ahead and adopt budget amendment, which this will be budget amendment number 12, by unanimous consent. You did hear a request for a garbage truck in your work session on Friday. The garbage truck cost is $424,517.38 and our mayor did ask that you do this by, as, under an emergency purchase. It will still be bought from a bid that is provided through our state contract, but we would like for you to do it by unanimous consent.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion and a second that the rules be suspended and unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said action.
I'll make that motion. Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you.
The motion has been considered and action has unanimously carried. Is that good? Okay. Thank you. All right, item number 12, Kathy?
And council members, we want to go ahead and introduce budget amendment number 13, which would provide some HVAC at the nadatorium, fencing around the HVAC due to some problems with theft as well as two lifts for our outdoor pools. Total request was $20,500 and this would be coming from your park improvement fund. And this is just an introduction today.
Thank you. Item number 13, Kathy?
Okay, our nuisance abatements for today, we do have a number of them. There's about 10. So, take just a few minutes to go through this. But this will be a public hearing, so... We will ask that, and I think there are a few people here that may like to speak on this today. So, our first piece of property will be at 2519 Corona Avenue. It's property belonging to Betty Jean Hill and Roberta Evans. This is in District 5 and it was for the removal of an unsafe structure. Total cost, $9,469. And if someone is present today and like to speak to that, they are welcome to come forward.
Okay. Is there anyone that'd like to have anything to say to matter?
Okay. So, the next piece of property is at 815th Avenue. It's property that belonged to Francis B. Woods and Kathy Marquero. This is in District 4. It was for the removal of an unsafe structure, $8,069.
Is there someone here to speak? On that behalf? Okay.
Next piece of property is at 68 Falcon Drive, property belonging to Ray and Jolie Davis, District 3. It was for the removal of an unsafe structure, $9,733.
Is there anyone who wants to speak? On that behalf? Okay.
Property at 2807 Corona Avenue, belonging to Phyllis Bowers, District 5, removal of an unsafe structure, $6,505.
Anyone here to speak on that? Okay.
811 Highland Avenue, Brian L. Gann, District 1, removal of an unsafe structure, cost is $5,605.
Anyone here to speak on that behalf? Okay.
Our next piece of property is at 2203 Indiana Avenue, Joel G. Property LLC, District 1. It was the removal of an unsafe structure, $4,825.
Anyone here to speak on that behalf? Okay.
The next piece is at 3302 Calumet Road, James E. and Brenda Aldridge, District 4. The city removed an unsafe structure, total cost, $14,225.
Anyone here to speak? Yes, ma'am. Will you come to the podium and state your name, please, and address?
Brenda Aldridge. My address?
Yes, ma'am.
Is my address on state? It's 147 Oak Ridge Road, Parish, Alabama.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, you can speak.
I don't think that I owe this. I didn't get a chance to do anything about it. None of the addresses that are on there are consistent. The address that they removed from was 3304 and y'all have 3302. You sent it to me, but you sent it to the wrong name, so I didn't, I couldn't even sign for it when it came. It was in somebody else's name. Everything that I got, I got from Mr. Bolton. And the name that he said they sent it to and address did not come there. Nothing was done right.
Okay.
So, I don't feel like I owe this.
Yeah, Mr. Bolton, you'd like to speak to that reference?
Yeah, I have to clarify on the structure. There was three different structures that Ms. Aldridge owns and we did interchange one of the names. It did go to the wrong name. The address was correct. But the other two structures also went to the right name and the right address and we didn't get any calls on those also. So, all three of the letters that were sent back were sent back undeliverable. So, we did post signs in the yard as we're supposed to, but I don't think that anybody at the address was receiving mail or whatever the situation may have been. There was three different letters that went, and she's correct. One of the letters, the name was wrong, but the other two letters, the name was correct.
Okay, thank you. So, ma'am, what are you asking?
If I couldn't do anything about it, if I didn't know about it, I couldn't do anything about it. My husband and I both just found out this year that we have cancer and so we've been in and out of hospital and doctors. He's home in bed now, I mean, had his lung removed. So, I mean, but had I known about this and it came to our address, but I couldn't sign for it because it wasn't mine.
On the other, he said one of them, one letter was the wrong name, but the other two were...
But he gave me the paperwork showing where he said that they sent it and it doesn't even have the right address or anything. But this is, this is the right one, the one he gave you. But this is not where it went to and it's not the name that he gave it to before. The address is 3304 and both the addresses on both of these things say 3302. It's where it was removed from and it was not.
But that's not the, that's not the address that it was mailed to?
The certified letter?
Yeah, the certified letter was mailed to my address, but it was in somebody else's name, so they wouldn't let me sign for it.
On all three?
No. No, the others, no, I did not get anything on the others. And my address is, for the past eight years, has been the 147 Oak Ridge Road.
But the other two were shown as the correct address and name?
With the correct name.
I'm going to look at this more. That, so you, one was wrong, but you did not receive the two?
The only one that I got of those was 1602 7th Avenue and I got a certified letter for that one. But the other two and this one, I did not. And like I said, I have a thing right here showing, I mean, it went to somebody else's name, but our address. But like I said, they wouldn't let me sign for it. So, I didn't know anything about it.
So, you never received the letter, what you're saying, for that address?
And it says on, yeah, and it says, "Address unknown" on here. But the address is...
Yes.
Ruthine, U.S. Postal Service Secretaries and other people sign for certified letters all the time that aren't addressed to them. The post office, and I'm not disputing her, I'm just saying, that's not on us. Once we send them to the letter, but we get them back all the time, that'll be to Brent McCarver and it's signed for by whomever picks the mail up, such as if Bridget, you know, goes and picks our mail up here, that happens all the time.
I'm still confused how if, I understand that one letter and you're saying you couldn't sign for it.
Yes.
One did.
Because it wasn't in my name. Mm-hmm.
But the other two pieces of property were your name and your address?
One of them I did get, the 1602 7th Avenue.
Okay, and you chose not to sign?
I talked to them about it.
Only after we tore down the 3304. That's when we got in touch. She got in touch with us and we, she did solve the problems at the other house. So, we took them off nuisance abatement.
What I'm saying is, I never got a chance to do anything about this. I didn't know anything about it.
But we weren't contacted until we tore the house down.
Okay, you know, councilor, I have anything to add. Ma'am, could I ask you to remain after the meeting and you can sit with our attorney, Mr. Bolton, and our clerk and we will try to resolve this matter? Okay, thank you. Okay, Kathy?
The next piece of property is at 2807 Euclid Avenue, belonging to Charles Crutchfield, District 5. It was for the removal of an unsafe structure, $9,685.
Want me to call you a name now? How you doing? Well, no one seemed to get up and discuss this, but I'm the type of person like this. It was unfaithful for the city of Jasper to have something torn down, called moving the property. That 2807 is 145 by 142 alleyway. I won't discuss all the rest of it today. I do this in your workshop. It's very, it's very, I'm very upset with the city of Jasper. I was a part of the city, I worked for the city 22 years. I worked on about seven different males and I had never seen anything like this. Now, y'all been trying to have that and I understand that you was not able to tear that house with your equipment. All these folks had to have that, they paying city tax. And I can't understand why you couldn't. And the one tour I was down was, I didn't know a person, but you said nothing back there. Very good man. I think everything that you did for a man because your grace and your mercy, I appreciate that. But I'm very, I'm very concerned with what's going on in the city right now. I'm very concerned. And you will hear more about me in your workshop because I'm seeing things going on right now that y'all are not doing anything that you're supposed to do. How would you go have a house torn down for less than what the property costs? Three, more than $3,000 or any property on fiscal will cost. You tore down houses next to First Baptist Church was not that much condemned, but y'all condemned the house. A couple of runners was out of it. You tore his house right down here, it was behind my house. What a snakes for the city of Jasper. What snakes? You need to think about this now. I don't come to debate the house on 2807 because I know what's going on down there, but that would, that would come up in your, in your workshop because they like that. This is, this is sad, this sad, it's sad in the city of Jasper now. And don't say I don't know anything about it because I worked with most all of y'all. Here's some of my coworkers sitting over here now. That was an unfaithful bid that y'all did. Couldn't you get, couldn't you have got a cheaper bid? Y'all know what, you know what this property cost. You could have called it down here to the down and got the price on these houses. Probably don't call it no more than $3,000 for a fortified wire of 142 alleyway in the official community. Yes, some of them was condemned, but two of them was not that bad condemned. Now, who gonna pay? Well, look, you named about seven houses, about seven, eight houses. The average one is $9,000. All I do is multiply by the, so actually, y'all paid off about $40,000 to go there and tear a house down. And I mean, and I'm not talking about you because you did your job. He come in, got the house down and he was gone. He said, "Oh, thank y'all for them $9,000." He bought his two trucks and then he was gone. And I talk to him every day and thank you for what you did once again. You're gonna tear a house down because people said, "Hey, we're in the house there and it was freezing cold." And you tell them, "Ain't a disgrace for the city of Jasper" and paying... And I worked for y'all for 22 and a half years. It's a sad situation. I don't know how you're gonna get it, but whatever you do, you do what you got to do. But it was unfaithful to tear down a house that didn't worth no more than $2,000. May God bless you, may God keep you. And I hope we can get a better, better understanding from our city councils. If not, all we want to do is a second and a second of a motion. Let's tear it down. Make sure that when you're doing something, that it's gonna be specified and everybody gets benefit out of it. There's no benefit for these folks that ain't got no jobs. $14,000. $9,000. $9,000. $7,000. Don't need to think about this. You tore a house down before, even you got grants before. Now, if you're getting the rest of it, you're spending thousands or millions of dollars on different stuff. You don't bought half a city up on taxpayers' dollars, on grant dollars. It make no difference how you got it. That's my city council there. I see the principal up there, the doctor's not him. Cass, you been around a long time. You was him when I got him. I might have been here before you got here. You was on the backside. But God bless you, but that, that, that's ungrateful, eh? For these folks gotta sit up here and worry about $9,000. How hard I pay for the rent? I'm gonna see y'all at your workshop.
Thank you.
I think it's a lot of stuff to be talked about in the city of Jasper. Sorry about that. God bless y'all.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Come to the podium, Mr....
Good morning. I'm here to also with the 2807. I have a couple of questions. Did you guys get, try to get a grant? Before, when you tore houses down, you had a grant. Did you not apply for a grant? That would have taken care of most of the houses. Did you or did you not apply for a grant, simple as that?
Not to tear houses down, I'm not aware of any that we did, no.
We have not applied for a grant on this round of housing and grants aren't always available for that type of work. But you're exactly right. I remember when there was a time the city could get grant funds for it. Now, we do hope to apply for some grants that we believe is available, maybe for this next round of housing, but it, it does take a while to get applications and grant money approved, if it's available.
But it's too late. And like it was said, the cost, I had gotten in touch with a guy that was licensed. He had the same equipment. He could have torn the house down for $5,400, but yet you guys charged $9,006, almost $10,000 for property that's not worth no more than $3,000. That doesn't sit too good with people. I mean, with the city, it's a, it's a bad thing. Did, did the city tear the houses down?
No, ma'am. The, the houses were torn down by an independent contractor and that contract was bid by the city. So, it, it was a competitive bid that the city had available to anyone who is in the business of tearing down houses.
Okay, but you did not apply for a grant?
Grants?
But yet you knew that you were gonna tear the houses down and you didn't apply for a grant. Before you tore houses down, there was a grant. That was, that was years ago. But, you know, I just wonder why?
We've been tearing houses, condemned houses down the entire time and grants come available at different times. Right now, there's been a big pushmore for the water and infrastructure. So, it's, it's the timing of grants. Absolutely, anything that we can do to help. But it's not like we just tore these down either. It's, it's, this has been, since I've been in office 12 years, there, we continuously, we just did get a backlog and had a lot of complaints from a lot of family members and community and citizens about the unsafe structures in our community and the things that were going on inside the unsafe structures.
Well, the average person cannot pay what you guys are charging. It's a lien on the property. So, you got what you wanted. You're gonna have the property. You know, I live in District 5 and you probably want the whole thing. I'm just saying. You know, that's my opinion. But why would you do that? You know, people could not afford to pay $10,000, $14,000 for property. Yeah, it needed torn down, sure. But at that cost, somebody's pocketing something. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy?
The next piece of property is at 2705 Corona Avenue, property belonging to Herman and Shale Davis, District 5. It was the removal of an unsafe structure, $9,405.
Is there anyone here to speak on that behalf? Okay. Okay. Kathy? Can you?
Yeah.
That's the guy that went to the hospital. She's been okay. I've got an emergency.
Yeah. Right there. It's the speaker right there. If you'll just say your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Bowers Boyle. I own the property at 2508 and 2807 and 2917 Florida Avenue. We were notified by a letter only, as everybody else was, but the cost is outrageous. We could have had the houses torn down on our own for a lot less. And I just feel like that this is not fair. It's not fair. And as you just heard, I have several properties and I don't know how you're gonna get that money. I don't know how.
I don't know how. I'm here, uh, as you see, I just brought my mother in here, she's elderly, and she can't afford to pay it.
I understand, you were notified by mail?
Exactly.
Uh-huh, and then you also had signs in the yard as well to indicate that the houses were going to be torn down? Did, was there a conversation with, um, Adam?
I did speak with Adam one day, he was over there, however, he, he let me know that we had been mailed some letters, and we were not here. I actually live in Huntsville. My mother was with me in Huntsville, so we didn't know anything about the letters until you came over that day, Adam, and you and I spoke. So Adam is aware of that.
I think another thing that everybody probably needs to keep in mind, to do work in the city of Jasper to tear down the houses, you have to be, you have to have the credentials to do, and you also have to have a city business license. I was contacted by several people that wanted to tear structures down, but they didn't meet the qualifications to tear structures down in the city.
I understand.
So that might be where some of the confusion's coming in also, perhaps why.
And I'm sure that's true, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure you can get someone to tear it down for less, but they don't have a business license, they don't have the proper workman's compensation and insurance, and we can't just let, we can't turn people loose to tear down houses if perhaps they don't turn off the gas, the electricity, so on and so forth. I, I understand.
I wouldn't hire anyone that is not licensed, I don't do business that way.
I'm sure.
However, I feel like I should have had the option of tearing it down, instead of receiving a letter and the second letter in the mail telling me how much to pay. No, I feel like you're getting in my pocket. And I don't, I don't live for that, I didn't work for that.
Okay, I need clarification.
When the letters go out, there's thirty days before any sign is put in the yard or anything is scheduled for them to respond to the city and set up a plan to tear their own house down, to repair the house, to get a building permit. If you purchase a building permit, the law gives a six-month extension at that point. The situation in all of these, and I understand the question is the cost, but the situation is you do have the thirty days before anything is moved forward, before it's even brought to you to be declared an unsafe structure, to contact our office in the, in the City Hall of Public Annex and make those type of opportunities.
Again, I understand the thirty days, as I said, we were in Huntsville, not Jasper. I understand, however, um, you should have made a phone call.
To who? We don't have phone numbers.
You know who owned the property, I'm sure they have a phone.
The law requires in the Senate to who was supposed to.
That's okay to send it in the mail, I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
We don't have the ability to search for phone numbers for everybody.
But you take time to search for addresses and owners.
No, amen. The tax record has, does not have phone numbers, it only has addresses.
Well.
We have, we have fulfilled our legal obligations, and we appreciate you coming and talking with us. If you'd like to remain afterwards and have some additional conversation, we would be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jenny, we do have one.
You have one more?
One more. Uh, twenty-nine hundred Gerald Kennedy Drive property that belongs to Rhonda L. Knowles of District One. We removed an unsafe structure, six thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars, and that does complete them.
And is there anyone here to speak about that item? Hearing none, moving on to item fourteen. Consider adoption of an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Item thirteen, do I have a motion to consider adoption of a resolution to set costs for these nuisance abatements?
And I don't know if y'all will leave the one out.
Well, that's what I need to, the District Four, I would like to have that, so I'd like to leave that one out and have discussion.
Okay.
And see the letter, I mean, understand the letters.
Okay. With the exception of that one, do I have a motion to consider adoption of the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Item fourteen, consider adoption of an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes, Kathy?
And council members, this was introduced in the last council meeting, um, this is simply just, um, providing information to our, uh, tax assessor that we have not changed our ad valorem rates, and, um, everything will remain as is.
Do I have a motion to consider this adoption?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Item fifteen, Kathy?
And council members, the next item is an ordinance, um, which we'd like to do by unanimous consent, to declare that the City Hall Annex Building and property located at eighteen-fourteenth Fourth Avenue will, uh, will declare that as unneeded property, and this is a part of the exchange that we're doing with exchanging the City Hall Annex with a property that's located by the new City Hall.
I will entertain a motion and a second that the rules be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of an action said on, uh, the adoption of this ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. The motion for unanimous consent for immediate consideration of an action on said ordinance has unanimously carried. Uh, item sixteen, Kathy?
Once you have unanimous consent, that has to pass by a majority.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion and a second that the ordinance be finally approved.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
And we're looking to close that transaction by the end of the month, so thank y'all for doing that.
That's great. The motion for approval of the ordinance has been unanimously carried, and the ordinance has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen, Kathy?
And council members, we'd like to go ahead and introduce an ordinance today that will establish the use of electronic vote counting devices for our upcoming election. Uh, this is just required by state law, and it will be the same type of election equipment that is used by the county. Uh, but we wanna go ahead and get that set and get that down to the Secretary of State's office.
And this is an introduction, so no action will be taken. Kathy, any additional comments from the mayor?
Um, I don't think he had any today, thank you.
Any comments from council members?
Um, I was asked to let everyone know about the annual trivia night for Rotary that is Friday night that supports, um, our community, supports things that Rotary does in our community, and then also the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast on Saturday morning that's at Bevel as well supports our, particularly kids in our community, so.
Thank you. Uh, are there any additional comments from the audience? Yes?
Okay, speaking of dilapidated buildings and unsafe dwellings, there's a huge building in Mill Village that's been, I mean, bad since I was a girl. It has never been torn down or considered, I mean, it's in Mill Village.
And we can certainly put that on the list, um, Adam, if you would give that address, I'm sure, Adam, do you know the address?
That's not, I'm not gonna give the address, you can go up by, you can get somebody to go by and check it out and get the address.
Okay, well, we'll take care of that.
And that is how we typically, when people reach out to the city, they, I'm, no, I'm just saying, you did exactly what, I don't ride around and look, when, when my citizens call and complain, or they call the office and they complain that the, you know, the house beside them is dilapidated, that people are squatting in it, that's how we take these in, and, and then they look through the things. I'm just, I'm saying, you just did what, how we take, so now someone will go over to Mill Village.
Right, but I don't think the, a lot of the houses that was torn down had complaints about them, you know? They didn't have complaints about them. Uh, some of them were torn down in my neighborhood, that didn't look like they were, uh, a nuisance. Maybe had a couple of windows out, and they were torn down, and it's caused a lot of hardship on people. Uh, my dad worked hard for what he had. He was in World War Two, invasion of Normandy, and he would turn over in his grave if he knew that this was happening to what he worked so hard for. But I'm just saying, there's a difference, it seems like. That building, you can't pass, you, you, you can't overlook it, it's a huge building, I don't even know what it was, but it's been there for sixty, seventy years, longer than that.
We'll definitely look into that, and thank you.
Well, I, you know, it doesn't matter, I'm just making a, you know, just saying that, that building was there, nobody considered it. And then you go into the neighborhood and tear down buildings that really houses, that house next to Ms. Bowles' house, that house was very much livable, everybody don't have money to get elaborate houses, you know? And people like seniors and people don't make a lot of money, you say in thirty days, what's thirty days gonna do? You get a notice saying it's gonna be torn down in thirty days, get in touch with them, you think you're gonna get ten thousand dollars in thirty days? Anyway, I'm, I'm not complaining to you guys, but I'm just, you know, that goes through my mind, I have to let it out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, I have another question, um, well, an issue I'd like to see resolved. All the streets on Frisco area need to be repaved. I've asked Willie Moore for the last four years about paving Crutchfield Boulevard, that's the main street through Frisco area, and he tells me when he get more money, but he's not doing it.
It's in the next pavement.
It is.
I've heard that three or four times.
I, I'm the one that put it together, it's in the next pavement.
Okay.
It's in the Marvin Camp all the way to Hobbie.
Okay, 'cause all the streets on Frisco need to be repaved, they just, like this.
We paved twelve miles in District Five, so we're getting to twelve miles.
Yes, particularly.
So that will begin, ma'am, that will begin in the spring, this next paving.
Next spring.
Next paving.
Once again, another year, another year.
No, this spring.
This, it's this, it's this spring, and we go by the weather.
Any, anything?
Like I said, I don't know, but like I said, I'm really gonna see more of me now. I'm old school, and I believe doing what is right. Uh, some of your coworkers, some of your leaders is going on the glory now, that's why I'm just retired, but there was some promises left for Frisco. Then it was, it's in here. And I don't wanna come, that's because the preacher, my preacher, my preacher, maybe, that's going on, man, and, uh, it hadn't been done. It hasn't been done now, so I'm gonna come back here, I'm gonna come back here on your workshops on a Friday. So you might as well get ready for it, because everything that was said, it was five or six, it was right there where it was said, and it never been done, and I said, the engineer wanted to look at something, I don't know what he doing tonight. If something stopped up, then he did nothing. The same thing we talked about nearly a year and a half ago, and I guess whoever was in charge of all that back then, I know he done retired and got his check, he gone by his business. But it hadn't been done, and some other stuff that he did was illegal, or put drainage through the Frisco system that could get it all in trouble, including you guys, especially when you're talking about the railroad track, and that let all the water standing up behind some houses out there that is unnecessary, and the city needs to know what's going on. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't get a page to walk around on Old Seven, Eighth Highway, not through Frisco, nowhere. Drains are just stopped up everywhere, because if you got a car to drive, you gotta do is look at it and turn it in. I don't know what kind of management we're dealing with down in the fire department, God bless you again.
Thank you, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, thank you.